In order, would you please rise for the pleasure of the ladies? Councilor Montiel, would you do me a favor? We have today's evocation by Father Jorge Ricardo Farias from Sacred Heart of Jesus Parish. Would you please come up? We'll move on. We have called to the public, Mr. Charles P. Wilson. Would you please come up, state your name and address? Thank you. Yeah, he'll bring you the mic. Thank you.
I hope you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I hope you don't mind if I sit. The, I think, a new Nogales cemetery.
Stop by, oh, just. Press the button.
It's on red, put it on green. Press that button.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. I think a new Nogales cemetery is needed and to be planned for. The reason I've come up before the council is the council sets policy. And, and just what I have heard, the Nogales City Cemetery is essentially full and plans have to be made to come up with a city cemetery, south or east or what have you, and it's up for the council to set the policy, and that's all that I'm, that's the reason for me being here. And that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We'll go to item number five, public hearing. Number one, consideration and possible action of rezoning, of a rezoning request application by property owners, Israel and Claudia Puig, a partial 103-09-038 located at 205 East Price Hill Road. This request is a rezon, a portion, 2.97 acres from a 9.29 acres of undeveloped land from single-family residence, 12 SFR-12 to light industrial.
Double.
Second. Go ahead. Yeah, number five.
It's just a, just a public hearing. There's no motion. You just ask, is anybody here for the public?
Oh, yeah. Okay, this is just basically a motion or a request if there's anybody in, in the audience that has anything against this motion or this request. If not, okay, we'll continue and it goes into our, we will have the voting later down or the approval later down on the, on the agenda. Basically, it was basically a public hearing request. Okay, going to item six, presentations. First, we're gonna recognize, and before that, I want to really, really thank everybody, you know, on the list, everybody that participated, everybody that had to do anything, anything with the parade, you know, even, even the audience was great, you know, from the bottom of my heart, you know, it was a tremendous parade. I really, really enjoyed it. I hope everybody enjoyed it as much as I did, you know. All the participants, all the attendees, the vendors, I think it was just a great, great venue for, for the city, and it's something that, you know, started off and kicked off the holiday season in a great way. So I want to thank everybody for, for being part of it. The committee that, Ms. Montiel, thank you for organizing that, and, and everybody, everybody in the city. It's, you know, PD did a great job, Parks and Rec, and everybody, you know, I don't want to miss anybody, so I'll say everybody, everybody, everybody that really had to do anything with the parade. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It was a great, great event. So now I'm gonna continue with recognizing the judges on, on the parade. I want to thank the judges, and first of all, Ms. Olivia Ainsa Kramer. See here? Okay. Again, and Ms. Melissa Silva. Come on, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Chris Rivas. Okay. Next, we're going with Sal Jara. Working. And then we go with Princess Gled. Okay. Well, thank you for coming here, and I really appreciate what you guys did. All right? And next, we go to the Masters of Ceremony. Marco Antonio Gonzalez. El Chonito. And then we got Veronica Wetherby. You guys did a great job. Next, we have the student elves that we had giving out all the candies. And yes, this was the first time that we had elves giving out the candy, you know, to avoid the throwing, and they did a great job. I've got Alicia Peralta. Thank you very much. I've got Suri Cuameya. Thank you. I've got Erica Maris. Oh, there she is. Congratulations, thank you. I've got Eddie Castillo. Este correteo por todos lados. Let me tell you. He came back to me like 20 times or more. Good job, buddy. Brian Mejia. Irma Janet Esquer. Sergio Cescena? Sergio, tú? Ay, ¿cuál eres? No Sergio Cescena? Elena Cescena? And I hope she's. Victoria Esquer? A ver, ¿cuál nos faltó? Ellen Mejia. Eh, dame, dame un bate. No, he's, we thought the last. Not the Melias, Judy? Okay, we'll take care of you, buddy. Next, I'll go ahead and take a picture, get over here. Africa. Muchas gracias a todos, eh, good job. Next, we have the Challenger School. We got a little plaque for them. They did a great job decorating the Christmas Hall, Christmas tree, and for the public to, to look at. Christmas tree that was right here. Anybody representing Challenger Elementary? There you go. Now, the moment of truth. Unfortunately, there's, like everything, there's winners and losers, but there's no losers here. I think everybody had a great time, everybody enjoyed it, everybody loved the floats. And again, thank you, everybody, for your participation. Now, goes like this. City of Nogales Holiday Light Parade, The Magic of Christmas. Best of the parade, third place Challenger Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
First year, we did a great job.
Could you please wait right there? That's what we have, all right, man? Then, City of Nogales Holiday Lights Parade, Magic of Christmas, Best of the Parade, second place, Robert M. Bracker Elementary School.
Thank you first.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
The scene was fabulous.
Okay, City of Nogales Holiday Light Parade, Magic of Christmas, Best of the Parade, first place, Francisco Vasquez de Coronado Elementary. You guys could over here, so. We're gonna take a picture. Okay, yes, one before we miss out, Mr. David Fernandez, was, where are you, Mr. David? He was here? Okay, he, he's the one that created our city Christmas card, and I want to thank him, you know, for, for taking the time and doing that, donating his time to support the city. And, you know, that card went out to, I'm gonna say, a good chunk of, you know, international, Washington, and, you know, around the state, and everybody that, you know, I could really think of thanking him and wishing him a Merry Christmas. So a lot of business owners here and everything, and I think, you know, Judy did a great job getting them out and getting them out early. Lisa, again, thank you for getting Mr. David to do this, a great honor for the city. Thank you. Next, we go to recognition of Las Casitas. First of all, American Consulate, Ms. McFarlane. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you for participating. And again, all these casitas, you know, I hope we could increase more and more. I know we have, we have people that want to participate more, but again, everybody that participated, you know, in the 25 casitas, I really, really appreciate everything you guys do, because I think the whole community really enjoys going out and seeing all the different, what do you call it, decorations and everything, all the great ideas you guys come out. Thank you. Next is FOP. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Maribel Hernandez. Here. Somebody gonna pick it up, Maribel Hernandez? It's right here. Vicente Gonzalez. Uriel Sevajos. Judge Gillen. NHS Football Boosters. There you go. Cropper Chevrolet. I'll talk to the mic.
Ente, Mike.
Gracias. How the merchants? Cultura de arte? Contrails? Hey, ah, viene, viene. Gracias. Consulado. Consulado mexicano? Benadice? Ex? NHS Taco? Stuko? Desert Sky? There you go. Thank you very much. Centro Comunitario? Si es plasma? Gracias. Raiders football. Thank you very much. Who's getting the certificate? You. Hello, mi her. Good job. Mi primo. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. I'm upstairs. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Estimado, glad to have not seen my friend. Thank you, eh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Are you, you a 4-H club? Muchas gracias. I'm poco preferente, we support. Girl Scouts? Pasa, pasa. Gracias. Edilia Chacon? Edilia Chacon? No? Okay. Dental laser, Mexico Dental? Mariposa Community Health Center? Muchas gracias. Thank you, thank you very much. Jane Andrews? Terro estres? And Eminem Orfitch? Hey. Okay. Gracias. Food Bank? Estos Santos? No? That was the last one, so. Pégate para acá para charlar en la foto. Ahí. Again, thank you, everybody. Great job, great job. See you next year. Thank you. Muchas gracias. You got Stuko?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we have a presentation, Valentine's event for seniors. Mr. Vermonde, do you want to start it off?
Mayor.
Valentine's.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I put this on the agenda in its informational purposes. Grupo Cultural requested the use of our gymnasium on Ho-Hokam. I went ahead and approved it, so this is for informational purposes. They're gonna have a, an event celebrating Valentine's for senior citizens. And the only thing that we did is, is lending the gym tables and chairs, but Mrs. Lopez can answer, Councilwoman Lopez can answer questions if anybody has any questions about this event, but everybody is invited.
Go ahead, Councilor Lopez.
Yes, we have this event that is gonna be February the 13th, which is a Tuesday, and it's gonna be at the gym from 11:00 to 3:00. We're planning on having music, food, and a lot of entertainment, and it's just for seniors. Everything is gonna be free, and we have the sponsors here on the flyer, and all seniors are welcome. Is there any questions that you have about the event?
No, I want to thank you for putting it up. I think, you know, when Mr. Vermonde came up to me, thought that was a great idea, and thank you.
Thank you.
And this is, again, like she said, on February 13th at the Nogales Gym, from 11:00, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for, you know, adults or, or basically seniors. Thank you. Next, we go to financial monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I present the November of '23 monthly report. For November, we should be at 41.66% of our budget. So if you take a look at your Table A, this is our general fund. And with our general fund, we have brought in $12,942,532, which is 49%. And we have expended out $14,202,879, which is 36%. Also on the same table, our shared revenue, we have brought in $4,583,936, which is 42%. If you move on to Table B, this is our sales tax. For November, we collected $1,707,466. So compared November of '23 to November of '22, we collected So compared November of '23 to November of '22, we collected $1,4,000, $1,4,899 more than the year prior. You move on to Table C. That is our general fund, split out by each individual, um, department. We still have the ones that we're tracking that are over the 41.66%. Again, just as a reminder, a lot of that is due to once-a-year contracts that we pay at the beginning of the year or capital. If you move on to Table D, this is our HERF fund and our overweight fund. For HERF, we have collected $1,074,454, which is 42%. And overweight, we have collected $134,541, which is 54%. For the expenditure side, we have paid out for HERF $1,80331, which is 43%. And we have paid out $296,523, which is 34% for the overweight. If you move on to the next table, which is Table E, this is our sewer fund. With our sewer fund, we've collected $1,503,700, which is 50%. And we have paid out $1,14460, which is 42%. The next table is Table F, and that's our water. For water, we have collected $1,749,537, which is 50%. And we have paid out $2,786,611, which is 46%. The final table is Table G, and that's our sanitation. We have collected $1,240,588, which is 44%. And we have paid out $1,097,431, which is 30%. Are there any questions?
Does anybody have a question? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
In the last meeting, we, we talked about, uh, if you could separate the, the revenues coming in, coming in from, uh, from the first block of, of the city, which includes Morley and part of Grand Avenue. Did you ever get to?
So contacting the state, they will not do that for us, so we get weekly reports, and that's what we're trying to figure out how in here we can kind of tunnel them down so that I can present that to you, so we can kind of see exactly, like, Morley, where Walmart, because I know Mr. Doyle asked about the Walmart area, so that has to be done in-house, and we're working on that.
So, so the revenue looked good for November, and, but, uh, remember that December, the Morley Gate was closed for the whole month, so, uh, we wanted to see how much it was gonna affect us.
Oh, absolutely. I can go back and do a couple of months, once we can pinpoint exactly how we can pull all the data, because we get reports weekly from them, so we have to kind of pull them all and then add them all together. Um, I'll, I can do like October, November, December, and then we get the three months of when it was.
And even if it's just a ballpark figure, you know, just to kind of get a, 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 uh, what, what, uh, that part of the city is receiving.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping to have that completely pinned out, pinned down.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Councilwoman Montilla?
Um, Smolten, what, what exactly, uh, is noted, uh, the leftover COVID funds?
We talked about that last month.
Yeah, we did.
I know, and I forgot to put it in here.
So, since you run the finance of the city, what do you think is left? Because we're working on a project, well, you know, they're, Mr. Thapi is working on a project, downtown project, as you well know. Um, and some of those funds are going to be used.
Yes.
And apparently, I don't see them anywhere in the, in this budget.
No, and I forgot to put in there, and I know last month I gave you guys the spreadsheet, and since then, nothing else has been spent, so it's about $229,000? Oh, yes, thank you. I'm gonna put my glasses on, this is pretty small. Oh, $297,000, I'm sorry. So after the 1.5 million that was set aside for, um, the paving of Rancho Grande and for Royal Road, there's $297,000 left.
From all the 6 point whatever million dollars that we got during the COVID.
Yes.
Years, so it's, uh, 297 approximately. So if the downtown, this project that they've been working on, uh, I know we're gonna have a presentation, but I don't want to go back and refer to you. Do you know that these funds will be, are planning to use some of these funds?
So these are the funds that are still technically, I don't want to call unassigned, because remember back in '22, you guys assigned them all.
Yeah.
So at this point, if council says all $297,000 goes towards the downtown, all $297,000 goes towards the downtown.
Because in the last meeting that this committee, um, had, I sat in the back, just as a, uh, just observer, and one of the questions that was asked by a committee meeting member was, you know, how much money was left? And if I recall, my memory serves me well, the director said, well, none of the funds have been allocated yet. So, you know, they're working on a project, but yet, money's not tied to it. It looks like the federal government, right?
Right.
Take care of the migrants, but no money. Um, so, but maybe we'll, I'll ask those questions when he comes and starts, but there, there's $297,000 left. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, uh.
If, if those funds, Councilman Montilla, if those funds, uh, council wishes to allocate those funds to the downtown development, uh, you can put it on the agenda, as an agenda item next meeting, and you can certainly allocate those funds going towards, uh, downtown redevelopment, uh, project.
Said this $297,000, it would be, uh, up to the council to put, someone to put it on the agenda so that we can allocate this to the downtown project?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Gradias?
Mr. Vermonde, what has it been pre-assigned to, or what is it currently assigned to, that same amount?
It hasn't been assigned to anything. It's. I, I would have to go back. I know for, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Councilman Gradias, but there was allocations done to planning and zoning, to, uh, parks and rec, to streets. I know that, uh, a couple of months ago, you guys, uh, council, uh, approved, uh, using, uh, most of it for, uh, to finish some paving in Rancho Grande and, uh, Royal Road. I would have to go back, but that can always be allocated or reallocated, actually.
And it was already allocated to the planning and zoning department, which falls under the same umbrella, so.
Exactly.
Think we might have already covered that base, so we just need to look back at it.
Okay.
Councilman Bonillas?
Uh, uh, Mr. Vermonde, are we, are we done with the, uh, uh, we know we're using some MARPA funds, uh, for the WIFIL projects, uh, for the paving projects, are, are we, uh, are we done grabbing all the money from, from MARPA to finish out those projects?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Any other questions? Up to you, uh, Mitchy?
That's it.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Okay, move on to reports, uh, presentation of the Nogales Fire Department Staffing Level Operations Budget, uh, Reach Partnerships, and Strategic Mission and Goals of the Department by Chief Sergeant.
All right. So we're, let me back up, see if I can get to the beginning of the presentation. All right. So we're gonna go through, talk about the fire department. It was kind of a, uh, a large request, so I have about thirty-some slides, and we'll get through this pretty quick. Uh, statistics, we're gonna talk about first, the budget, operations division, prevention division, and then some departmental goals and objectives. Um, we're gonna first go through the stats. Um, there's about 27,000 fire departments in the United States. Um, only 9% of them, 9.5% are considered all career departments, which is what we are, which means we're all full-time folks. So that is, um, that is a, um, a small percentage of them are all career. Um, 8% of the responses that we're gonna talk about over here actually contain a mutual aid component, which means that we respond with our neighbors to the calls. So, um, it's something that's done nationally, it's something that we do locally. About 65% of the total call volume in the US for fire departments in 2021 was emergency medical, and only about 3% was fire. Most of the departments that serve a population under 25,000 are not all career departments, so we are anomaly. If you look at these stats, it basically starts out at 25,000 and up, um, on, uh, and this is from a, a federal report. Basically, um, so we are kind of an anomaly that we're all staffed, uh, with full-time employees under 25,000. Um, when you're on a 56-hour work week, the median, so that's the middle, is about 1.6 per, uh, thousand people. That's not per day, that's, uh, employed by the city, and then if you look down here, based, uh, we're in the West, and so it's about one firefighter per thousand people is, um, the median for the United States um, in a population between 25,000 and 49,000. So, um, basically, since '19, we were about, um, 3,500 calls. We went up to, uh, our highest year so far was 2022, and then 2023, we dropped back down. Um, we average about 10 calls a day. That's all calls. It's not like 10 per station, that's 10 per day, and we transport about six people to the hospital on average per day. This chart right here, um, talks about, uh, peak hours of call load. As you can see, it's pretty much between eight and eight. Um, if you come down to here, where we're talking about like point one, so that's two o'clock in the morning, we run a call about every 10 days at two o'clock in the morning on average. Those stats I look at frequently. This just happens to be December of last year. So, obviously, statistics, when you take call volume and you're looking at it, you'll see different, um, it depends on how you look at it. So there's some days, like, we know we'll dispatch more than one call in an hour, but this is on averaging it, so, I mean, we could do all kinds of reports, but I'm trying to get you a general overview of what the department looks like. And this is the calls per day. So you can see in December, our peak day was Wednesday in December, and we averaged about 13 calls a day on Wednesdays. Um, so, basically, we do not have a national, uh, required response time for the fire department. The only required response times we have are right here, and that's because we operate a certificate of necessity from the ambulance company. The city of Nogales, and I'm sure you all know this, owns a CON, which is a separate ambulance entity, which is run by the fire department. Um, it renews in 2024, so December 2024, they've had a bunch of rule changes. We had a conference call today with the Department of Health Services about them. One of the things is we're required to put GPS in all of our vehicles, um, to, uh, be able to track response times. So some of the capital money from the last couple of years have been putting MDTs in the vehicles, so we were ahead of that. They are changing, um, the response time reporting. And, uh, uh, one of the things is, it's beyond the CON times, which is, you know, 10 minutes or less, 90% of the time for an ambulance. They are actually changing the way that the city re- reports response times to the public. Um, the first one's gonna be in July, um, and that last line there, we need to go to EMD because one of the things is, right now, when a call comes in, we just dispatch it, uh, without really asking a ton of questions. And so if you go back to four years ago, when I first got here, we had this conversation with the council about, well, why can't we just send an ambulance? Well, we can if we actually ask, uh, pre-arrival questions. I know that, um, the comm center and the, got a significant grant, and I know they're gonna be working on, you know, upgrading that, and this will be the time, and I've talked with Steve a little bit about it, um, Steve Snead about it, but it's gonna make it easier for us in our, our response time, uh, reporting to the state when we get there. Um, but that's just one thing that you're gonna be hearing coming from us in the next couple years. It's probably a good two-year project from the construction and training and buying the right, uh, software and stuff to make that happen, plus we're gonna need personnel as well in the next couple of years to be able to do it. But if we don't do it, we're gonna have a hard time with the reports, because they're gonna look at every call as emergent. So basically, right now, it's broken into multiple categories. If you use the Clausen system, which is Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, Delta and Echo are the worst calls, like, the most critical. And so, um, that's, we read, send your most resources, Alpha and Bravo, you could just send an ambulance, so we could change the response patterns together, uh, completely for the city once we get that software, and so that's something you'll hear us talk about the next couple of budgets. We're gonna go to budget data. If you go back here to 2019, you can see the fire department was about 4 million. You go to this current budget year, you know, it's at 10 million. So why the jump, uh, 1.1 million in regular payroll, um, 2.3 in pension expenses, and 2 million in capital. We've been asking for a lot of capital, and we appreciate that. We're gonna continue to ask for capital to kind of upgrade, uh, things, so. But the 2.3 in pension expenses includes the increase to about 70%, so 70 cents on the dollar for every payroll dollar to help with the unfunded liability amount, plus the, uh, cost of the bonds and paying the bonds back. So why the 1.1 million jump in, uh, payroll, regular payroll? We, there were two frozen positions in '19 that had been unfrozen. We've added three, uh, firefighter positions, or you guys added three firefighter positions. One new BC, two prevention positions, we converted two, uh, three engineer positions to medics, um, last year. We, um, converted three EMT positions in this budget year to medic positions, and we, uh, balanced the engineer and medic pay. So you go back to that first chart, you see that 65% of the volume is actually medic. The medics were paid less, so we increased the medic pay to match an engineer. Um, upcoming budget things, uh, we're still asking for the payment or the, uh, capital for.
Hold up, Sergeant, you wanna make a question, Donald, this? Or you want to?
Um, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. Um, it's, it's your guys' presentation. I have tons of data. However you want to do it, I'm good. Yeah, absolutely.
Payroll, you're, you're saying that it went up and indicated here. Is it because you have also, remember, you restructured positions uh, back a few years ago? I mean, I was, I just started, um.
Yeah, that's actually in that slide, we.
Well, I'm asking you, do, do, so is that part of the restructuring and you forming positions?
Yes, that's part of the 1.1 million.
And how's that worked out?
For the most part.
Is it worth it? Is it worth 1 point million dollars, uh, in, in, in that type of jump?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's worth it.
Do you have data to show that, or it's just your opinion?
I'm not sure what data you would be looking for.
Okay. All right.
So, I mean, we could, like, I, and I'll be happy to create more charts and give you more stuff.
I don't need, I'll ask.
But.
Go questions.
Yeah.
I was just, you, you're very proud of the jump, so I was just wondering if that had to do with the restructuring of positions some time ago? time ago back that you did.
Yeah, the one point one million is, okay, so the one point one million is the restructuring of the positions is not the whole one point one million. So for each firefighter that we put in, it's about forty thousand dollars of just regular payroll. And then you have also the pension amounts and those other kind of things that go in there. So, you know, the hundred and twenty of it's just the firefighter positions. And then the change from paramedics to.
So that was part of the restructuring?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah, and so one of the things, like I said, now we're up to fifteen medic positions, which it, when we get them all filled, we'll have a medic on each vehicle. And that is super important because most of our call volume is medical. So continued capital for the ambulances, the engine that we broke up the capital over three years. The ambulance we broke up over three years and the ladder truck over six. Acquisition only and construction for Station Three is one of the things that we'll probably be talking about in the budget. And I know some of this is Mr. Bermuda's and I have not had a chance to have a whole lot of conversations on this, but those are some of the things you're gonna be hearing in the next conversations about the budget coming up. We're talking about putting in a safer grant. This was brought up last year in the budget process. It's similar to the cops where it's paid for for three years, and then after that, you have to pick up the employees. So another thing that we're looking for in this fiscal year is to adding a training captain, an additional inspector to round out the prevention department, an emergency vehicle technician, and then part of the conversation, and this is what I've had with Gene, is the wildland division was historically just a bucket, okay? Four hundred thousand in, four hundred thousand out. And there's been really no budgeting for that. So this year, Gene and I have talked about kind of creating a wildland division. Obviously, it's not an enterprise fund. It's still part of the general fund. But that's part of our conversation of, is it really, you know, a financially viable process? And are we putting all the expenses in there as opposed to just large buckets of cash? And this has been a multi year process, and Gene's been, you know, Gene came in and she's been making changes, which for is much for the better, obviously. And so that's part of our conversation that you'll hear in this year's budget.
Before we go any further.
Go ahead.
I have a question on on the acquisition of land and construction for Station Three. Is there a site already that they're looking at for that acquisition of land?
So, no, that's part of the conversation that I need to have with Mr. Bermuda's is what are we gonna do about the safer grants? There's a couple of options we could do. Like we could get six firefighters per shift from a safer grant and ups or five firefighters per shift and up staff the ladder with a five person ladder company. But we probably don't need that. And one of the things that you're gonna have to do is state what the issue is when you apply for a safer grant. So our issue is at the west port of entry in that general vicinity, we have a lot of call volume. It's equal distant from both stations. So we're looking for something in the Mariposa roundabout area over there as a third station to help with the response times to the west port of entry and along the border road and stuff. So.
I'm also concerned with the area, which is east of which is from downtown all the way Monte Carlo and Vista del Cielo and all that area, including Royal Road and what. They took in consideration, you know, besides the overpass that we have on emergency calls and like the Monte Carlo area where the train might be a problem.
Yeah, and so we have all kinds of options. And I think that's part of the decision that you could put one in both places and, you know, but call volume and growth, that's gonna be a Roy decision, I think, as we're moving forward. And I think one of my my responsibility to him is give him a bunch of data. And right now, some of the data that we're looking at from our only required response times are the ambulance responses. And we're pushing close to the ninety percent time in ten minutes or less because of the geography that's over by the west port. So.
The other question that comes along and goes with that new station. Right now, do we have the staffing that the two stations need? Are they adequate? And how are we gonna get the rest of the staffing for the new station?
So that's further in the presentation, if I can keep going. And if you still have a question afterward, I'll circle, I'll circle back.
Mayor, have a question.
Go ahead.
You said right now, chief, that on the wild, on the wild land, it was four hundred thousand in and four hundred. Is that the actual numbers? Is that what that?
It's generally what the budget's been for the last four years is like four hundred thousand. There's
That's average.
Just a placeholder. Okay, we haven't responded for two of those four years on wildland calls this year. I think we're close to, where's Fernando? We're close to four hundred this year, right? Yeah, so.
So you're saying that you 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 get that money and as soon as you get it, it's spent. But there's some money I imagine that's being left over that you guys can sort of set up at that separate account or?
Well, what we're trying to do is show the total expense associated with it. Like, for example, the fuel of going on these assignments isn't reimbursed. But we do get funding from the state or the federal government, depending on which kind of assignment it is. And so the expense of the fuel has just been kind of rolled into the general fund fire account instead of the wildland account. So we want to start tracking those expenses to make sure that wildland's actually throwing off enough cash to make it realistic to do.
Mayor, may I? Do you support these gentlemen working regarding the well and going out there?
Yeah, hundred percent. There's a, and that's a one of our in the operations section. That's one of our objectives is to continue to grow that division. Anything that you do, at the end of the day, we're all responsible, and we all know this, we're all responsible to the citizens. And we need to be able to explain to them what we're spending their money on.
Of course.
And so I think by breaking out the wildland division and making sure that that we're not, for lack of a better term, just paying for part of it out of regular day to day field operations is important. So people know really what we're spending money on. And that's why we're talking about breaking it out more and putting in more data.
Yeah. So since you're a data driven type of person, right, but you can also get kind of lost in the middle of all this, but I'm looking at some of the details here because you you jump all over the place. But I'm going back a little bit on the budget data that you have here. So right now, you're at what? How many employees do you have? Do not count yourself and all your administration? How many firemen do you have?
So we have.
On the ground?
We have forty five positions budgeted.
How many boots on the ground, though? Do not count yourself or the, you know, the?
So let's just go.
The division chiefs or the.
Let me just skip to that. So we have.
I thought you had like thirty five.
So we have six captain positions, six engineer positions, fifteen medic positions, eighteen firefighter positions. Okay. Now, what's currently full is four captains. Two of them have temporary assignments. We have six engineers. We have ten medics, one in class and four underfilled. We have eleven full time firefighters, two on military leave, one underfilled, and then four of them are currently open, which is what we're hiring more seasonal wildland folks to put them into the training process. Plus, we have four or we have five currently in our neck in this academy. So as it sits right today, we have twelve on one shift and eleven and eleven on the other ones that are regularly staffed there. Now, people call out, so we'll drop below twelve.
So right now, you have in total boots on the ground, you have how many?
So assigned to each shift, there's twelve and eleven and eleven. So we have thirty four people that are there. We have a ton of other people doing different things like now that we're sending people to medic school full time, so one person's basically out of pocket for six months to get his medic certification. And so he's still an employee of the department. He's just in medic school class.
So the reason I'm asking, because in two thousand and nineteen, I went back and you had like forty one firefighters, right? And then now you're down to thirty five boots on the ground.
Right.
Keep going now. That's the point, right? You you have less people working out there.
Yeah, I mean, we have less.
And you have these positions open that I'm seeing. See, I'm trying to, I'm trying to connect everything. So you have two unfrozen FF positions. You have these openings here that you have noted.
Right.
But you're down with thirty five right now. How do you plan to do that?
How do we plan to do?
How do you plan to fill these positions?
So.
Or do you hire within?
Well, it's really hard to hire within.
Why?
Because am I gonna hire them from Public Works?
No, within your, oh, come on, don't be silly, from your own department. Do you hire within your, you know, do you promote within to fill these positions?
Honestly, yeah, I do, honestly. Yeah, and so why don't we go to that? Since two thousand and nine, yeah.
I think we're getting off course here. There's an operational dish issues that need to be discussed with the city manager, not with us. When it comes to the funding later on during the budget process, when we should bring this up. And if you say that you have increased your budget by one point one million and still don't have enough positions, it's not because of lack of not having the resources, lack of having people, something that needs to be run through the city manager, so you guys can come up with a plan of how we're gonna hire these people. And any promotions that are gonna go through have to go through the process unless I'm mistaken. But I think we gotta take a step back and let the process work out between you and the city manager because we're spinning our wheels, getting information that we can't do anything here because we're policymakers, not directors.
Yeah.
And I think that's what we need to look at.
May I? And I know that we have an attorney here in house and, but the reason I put this on the agenda is because I I feel that we're going to be talking about budgets soon. And every, in my experience being here, is that when we talk about budgets, we never have enough information to base and give you enough support because we don't have, we don't have this type of information that you're giving us when we are talking about budgets. And so when directors come and we are the policymakers, start telling us to use taxpayers' funds to buy trucks and buy all your equipment so that you can have a healthy and viable department, we're sitting there and we're using taxpayer funds, and we should know these types of things. And so I don't know how, tell me, what other way aside from if I talk to the city manager, the city manager, I talked to him about putting this on the agenda so that I can get information, so I can be well informed, so that we sit there and we start talking about budgets. I also know exactly what needs are of these gentlemen sitting here too. So that's the reason I put it there, and maybe the questions are uncomfortable, but you are a director and I feel that, you know, questions should be asked, and this is the only opportunity I have because when we sit there, we're talking about using taxpayers' money, millions of dollars.
Right.
We, we, I don't know if you really are saying you need a truck. I mean, we bought two fire trucks that are sitting out there. I see one that's not being used, the other ones and sitting there have never been used, thousands of dollars. So I don't want to do that again. So maybe Roy, maybe this, I won't ask any questions, but I'll tell you when we sit down and ask questions, I will refer him to you when we start talking about using public funds, millions and millions of dollars. He's just said he needs a lot more money to run his department. So that's the reason I put it on the agenda.
Let's go, you know, let the sergeant finish the presentation because also what I'm looking is, you know, we're making questions and and down further on his presentation, there's answers, you know, so let's hear it out and then and then we'll make the questions.
And Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm not uncomfortable at all up here. I love talking about this. And so I'm more than happy to answer the stuff. So let's just, let's go. We did the budget. We'll rocket through this and then we'll get to the questions. Okay, so since September of nineteen, we've had twenty one internal people promoted at least once. Some of them have been promoted twice. Eighteen of our current employees have been recruited through our internal academy process. So what that means is what we were doing before is we were hiring from outside. And what we decided about three years ago was we were having, we were seeing people that came here leave quickly, okay? And they would come in, they would get training and bail. And so what we decided is, and this is a conversation with the previous mayor and him basically knowing that it was gonna be a little more expensive to do this. We decided to start our own internal process of bringing in people. So so far, we've brought in eighteen of our current folks through this process. A lot of them are local, some aren't. Obviously, there's requirements when you're hiring people. If you have a significantly qualified candidate, you have to offer them the job. You can't just say we're not gonna offer them the job because they're not local. So some of them have stayed, some of them have taken off. But for the most part, we've had eighteen people that have ties to the community that are that are doing a great job for us down here. And we have four more people in the current academy and then five more people that we're trying to bring into the wildland program. And when we get to the wildland program, we'll talk about the process. But when I was asked Wednesday night to do this presentation, Thursday morning, I looked on it indeed, and there are eighty nine other entities competing for firefighter entry level staff in Arizona Thursday morning. There were eighty nine other people out there trying to find people. And so growing them ourselves, and this was the conversation this morning at the the chamber breakfast, is that's the only way this is gonna be successful. And these are one homegrown and one second generation firefighter here. This is one of our folks that just promoted to medic, and he was the valedictorian of the class. And we brought him in through the academy process. We've been working on career development, which is bringing in classes with our regional partners as well as own, implementing taskbooks so people know what's required of them for the next training, what they need for the next position. Some of those are gonna be getting rolled out once they're approved. We changed from the ten month medic class where people were going off shift to the six month class where we pull you off the truck and you're essentially a paid student for six months. It got us our medics quicker and they're not having to deal with the stress of working twenty fours and going to medic school. So one of the other things that we've been able to do is now we have a state approved rope rescue instructor down here, and we've been able to teach some stuff regionally and working, like I said, we're working on the paramedics. We already went through these two slides. Our recruiting process, currently, we have a B C. position open. The captain recruitment process is tentatively scheduled for April, and then we're gonna have more medic testing around May. The operations division, our goals and objectives, and I clicked twice. So what we talked about before with the wildland folks and how we're growing our own people is we started out with five folks that were just local kids, and we put them through some wildland training. And one of the first things they did was we had them start cleaning up city property that was adjacent to houses because of the wildland fires that we've had in Meadow Hills and other places. And so we taught them, and then we were actually able to, when we started this current academy, we were actually able to have them help teach. And so this is our build out our wildland division, like I said, in the budget section. This is our crew that was in California recently. And these are them, their first essential day of the academy. I was able to spend some time with them personally and teach them some critical thinking and some other communications type stuff that we did. They're trying to get across the basketball court without touching the concrete. And they had a few two by fours and a few bricks. And as a group, they had to get all that whole group across without touching it, made them do some critical thinking, which was kind of fun. Some of our other goals and objectives for the fire department is continue to build out our hazmat team. I went too far again. I'm missing the button. Continue to build out our hazmat team. We practice a lot. And honestly, some of the increase in one point one million dollars is because when we change the requirements for the stipends, we also added in mandatory training. So you're required, if you have a stipend, to attend training. So we're paying the people to go to those trainings. That's part of that one point one million, which I think is exceptionally valuable because we actually had a hazmat spill and many of the crew members that were here got to Because we actually had a hazmat spill and many of the crew members that were here got to participate in that, which was, you know, is why we trained. So we continue to build that group. And then we're continuing to build our other specialties, which is the rope rescue and swift water. This was a regional class that we taught here that had people from Pima County, from other departments in the state, come down here and train with our folks, which was very cool. Part of our part of the outreach from the operations division, we went down to Mexico and we talked to the chief down there and and we're talking about what their needs were. One of the things that, the first thing that we, when we talked to him was, we said, hey, when we get our rope certified, our ropes guy certified, then we're gonna have you in, you know, let you send a couple of people to the class, which we did. This was the class recently that happened. And then also, as part of the hazmat drill, we had some folks from Nogales, Sonora, and further down at that drill as well, trying to work with our partners across the border. So that's some of the things that we're doing from there. So the prevention division, so sometime, I don't know when, prior to my arrival. They really don't, I mean, and I've heard stories, it's like an oh eight thing with the value of the peso and not a lot of people coming to Morley anymore and those kind of things. They really didn't have a whole lot of people that were outside of people on the trucks. And so we've been adding the prevention division. Why is prevention division important? Well, public education for safety, because when you actually dial nine one one, you're the first person, you're the first leg of the call. So what's gonna happen when you call? Like, you know CPR, you know, first aid. Can you put out a small fire with a fire extinguisher? You know how to use that. And that's what our prevention department is about. And it's also about reducing community risk. So we do inspections, the crews do pre-plans. The prevention folks do plans review to make sure that when the building's being built, it's meeting the current standards, and then they also work on preparedness and disaster recovery. And then manage the I S O process for us. From there, these are just pictures of us doing things in the public from the prevention folks and a little bit of operational. Whether we're in a school or they're there or they come to us, we're doing fire prevention things with the kids, community events, the high school, and then this is us in Patagonia, where we're talking to the seniors there about careers and fire departments and Wildland and those kind of things. Now, we're also doing a project with the Nogales Unified School District. So we were able to secure a prevention trailer. We had one before. And it's not like this one. This one's actually set up for the prevention training, where the kids can do bailout drills out the back window and you can teach inside and it's we're able to secure it used. One of the things in the past that I've done and I've been able to get donations of the graphics is we let the kids, we just did October month where the kids, we went to all the schools. And so we're gonna work with the school district and the kids are gonna draw some pictures of what that meant to them. And then I've already arranged for the company to donate the graphics to decorate that trailer with the kids' graphics. So when we go back, they'll be able to see their own stuff and it's just a cool project that we're working on currently with Nogales Unified School District. The overall department objectives and goals. Yeah, I was gonna I was gonna definitely hit that. No, it's okay. I didn't have a slide for it. So we had a great conversation with them yesterday, February twenty seventh, it's gonna be our first class. We're doing two hour safety training sessions monthly with the chamber. The first one's gonna be CPR. Next, we're gonna do first aid, and then we're gonna do fire extinguisher training. We're we have it scheduled for Tuesday. There's some debate on whether we're gonna get a good crowd for that. So one of the things we're gonna do is see how the first one goes, but we had a great conversation with them. We were able to put our our documents about what you need for to start a business and like your smoke detectors and fire extinguishers and exit signs in their packets that they hand out. So we delivered that to them for for that, and then we're gonna try out these classes. We think we can probably get five or six different subjects and just rotate them once a month for two hours. When I was talking to them yesterday, they thought that it would be too long to do like a four hour class, so we're gonna try it with two hours. And we're gonna, we're gonna go from there. So our overall department goals and objectives is provide quality service to the citizens, which I think we're doing. We have a long way where we can still go and grow things. Provide employees the opportunity to grow. Provide career opportunities for local residents at a reasonable cost. And one of the things is, we just got an email today from one of our first academy where he got, he went up to Pima and he's only five credits away from an associate's degree, based on us putting him through the classes. And he's hitting three years right now, and so he's gonna get to go get his five classes, hopefully. I mean, assuming you guys approve it with the tuition reimbursement. But he'll have an associate's degree with zero student debt. And that is one of the things that we're trying to do. And then the last thing, and this is a repeat from two thousand nineteen, is when people leave here, when they retire, we want them to have a quality of life and a health, a healthy quality of life. Meaning, we don't want them, you know, mentally wrecked, we don't want them physically wrecked, and we want them to be able to enjoy their family. And so we have added, you know, physical requirements, we've added fit for duty physicals, we're adding peer trainers. We're sending people to to do that one per shift, so that they can help folks who aren't necessarily physically fit get in better condition. Last year, you guys gave us the ARPA money, and part of that was to equip the stations with workout equipment, and we've been able to do that. And so I mean, that's part of the overall thing. There's a lot of work to do. It's a constant moving forward process, but that's where we're at.
So just so the public knows and the gentleman here, I put this on the agenda again, is because sometimes you don't know the logistics of things. And that's okay, because I've learned to quickly. That I wanted to know a little bit more about the department and and because when we start giving out millions and millions of taxpayers' money, we need to make sure that we do our due diligence and that we also are aware of the needs of the fire department. Okay, Mr. Bermudas? And so now that I got your packet here, I will go through it very carefully, and I'll direct some of the tougher questions to the city manager later on about staffing and morale and so forth. I do want to thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight and listening to your leader and giving giving us a presentation about what what is going on in your department. And I want to thank you for your time. Thanks.
I also want to thank you, Chief, for the great presentation and staff for the jobs that you do. And I know you're understaffed and like every other department. But if we're gonna set a precedence and we open Pandora's box, I'd like to see a presentation from every director. Next would be the fire department, and I think we're gonna be surprised by the number of millions that are in each department. But if that's our goal, then I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for the support.
And, you know, it's hard to just come out with questions right now. You know, we just saw the presentation where we like, you know, Councilwoman Montiel, you know, let us dig into it and 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 come out with the questions. I think we got a follow up on 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 your presentation, Chief. Thank you for for doing it, you know. You know, we could spend all night here if we start right now. So I think I think it's something for us to go back and 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 look at and study and and see, you know, the dos and don'ts and where and how we could get this, you know, not just this this division or direction of but look at, you know, down the road on on all our our positions, you know, different different directors, different positions and different costs. But, you know, just off off my head, you know, I, you know, can you, is there a way you could figure out what the train delay is? You know, when when you have to go around the train and and, you know, because it's blocking one of our main main axes or crossroads from east to west or west to east. What what timeframe does that take? You know, you know, because it, you know, ten fifteen twenty minutes could could determine the life.
Oh, absolutely. And one of the things we can do is and this is working with, and and we're, we're working in conjunction with the communications folks, like with the in with with putting the M D Ts in the trucks. We can actually work with them on if we do get delayed by a train of being able to put in something into CAD that says, hey, it was delayed by a train, where we can pull that call. And then we can tell you how many times we got delayed by a train. So it's it's just a matter of of putting that in and figuring it out. We can definitely do that, though. If that's something you're interested in, I'd be more than happy to look at it for you.
Oh, yeah, could. I'm deep looking into getting working the impossible, try to get the railroad out of the city.
Yeah, something we can definitely do.
I'll be in Washington next year, and I already have you know, plans to, you know, talk to people on that, because, you know, right now, we, you know, there's a lot of things people don't know on infrastructure, Mexico and all that, and all that's gonna be a bigger problem for for our city. But things like that that we gotta look into. Mr. Bermudas, you have something?
Yeah, it's more of a, I guess, homework for for Mr. Bermudas and you, Chief. When when the firefighters are assigned to a wildfire and stuff like that, and we get our refund, we get our money back.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Okay, I'm sorry. And when, like I was asking the chief and Mr. Bermudas, when the firefighters go out and they're assigned for a wildfire and then we get our money refunded, do you know if does that include the unfunded liability and all the E R Es included?
Yes.
Yes?
So it's what it, the only thing it doesn't include is fuel. So it has, there's a report that Gene creates for us every time there's an increase. And we submit it to the state and it has their pay, their benefits, the, because it's like for us, seventy cents on the dollar, that's actually included in there. So we're not creating more unfunded liability. They're actually covering that part of it. So that's that's the good part of it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I do appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, next, I'm gonna unfortunately, we have a call to make. And we're gonna jump from, you know, reports item to to executive session, because we got a person that's waiting for a call. So we're, I move to go into executive session. All in favor? All right, opposed? So we'll move to executive session and come back as soon as we're done. Thank you. Item number. All in favor? Right? I'll post. So we'll move to executive session and come back, uh, as soon as we're done. Thank you. Item number-
Are you recruiting you?
He wanted to.
Have a continued right to use the IOI up to our capacity or the capacity that we own in that IOI, which is 4.84 million gallons daily. It will also provide a process and procedure regarding new connections into the IOI by the city to assure continued growth by the City of Nogales. The IBW C as part of the obligation under the Act has to do other things, too. They're going to install a debris screen at the commencement of the IOI into the United States to catch debris, but more importantly, to intercept any type of illegal bundles or drugs or so on coming into the United States, which has occurred in the past leading to certain breaches in the pipeline that have caused a problem to everybody. They also have to renegotiate a treaty with Mexico regarding the continued IOI maintenance and operation, the flows that go into it, and payment from Mexico into that. But that doesn't -- once we get out of it, that doesn't concern us. In connection also with this Act, IBW C has been allocated and funded a certain amount to install the debris screen and also to do whatever is necessary with the continued maintenance and operation of the IOI. That's it in general. The effective date of that is October this year, and hopefully before then we will have our agreement with IBW C ready to go.
Go ahead, Councilor Montiel.
I'm just curious, when you were saying that they're taking responsibility, and we were just finishing our slip line on improving the IOI, was there any cost left over to the city on that improvement? And will they be responsible for some of that cost?
For the IOI? I mean, for the sliplining that's going on? Yeah, we're not paying anything on that now. But see, that has been a continuing controversy between IBW C and the City of Nogales regarding ownership of that line and responsibility. In the past, when there's been breaches of the line, when it's overflowed, it's broken, drug bundles plug it up, all those problems, it was always pointing fingers at each other. It's your line, you fix it, you're responsible for it. It's always been our position, City of Nogales, that that is a federal issue and a federal responsibility. Now, this legislation makes it mandatory that it's a federal line.
So they'll take over any costs that were there?
They'll take over. It's going to be their line, it's their baby.
Councilor Boris?
Mr. Machado, we're still going to pay our use of the IOI as far as our laterals, right? Our connections, our usage?
We don't pay anything. Part of the agreement that we are negotiating, there will be no cost for the use of the IOI because we're conveying any interest that we have. You know, we're saying, you know what, it was yours anyway, but we're going to settle this. Whatever interest you think we have, it's yours now, okay? And that's what the agreement that's called for under this agreement. But in addition to that, we can continue to use the IOI because we own, bought and paid for, a right to convey within that line 4.84 million gallons daily. We're at two, we're not even at half. So this agreement will ensure that we continue to be able to use that without cost.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilor Montiel.
So, yeah, did you want to ask that? Oh, you -- oh, okay, okay, that's fine, yeah. Oh, he did, okay. So nothing's -- there's nothing to do in terms of the city being involved now with its IOI?
Well, we still have to reach an agreement, and there's some points of controversy within that agreement that still have not been resolved. I would say--
What?
Have a continued right to use the I O I up to our capacity or the capacity that we own in that I O I, which is 4.84 million gallons daily. It'll also provide a process and procedure regarding new connections into the I O I by the city to assure continued growth by the city of Nogales. The I B W C as part of the obligation under the act has to do other things, too. They're going to install a debris screen at the commencement of the I O I into the United States to catch debris, but more importantly, to intercept any type of illegal bundles or drugs or so on coming into the United States, which has occurred in the past, leading to certain breaches in the pipeline that have caused a problem to everybody. They also have to renegotiate a treaty with Mexico regarding the continued I O I maintenance and operation, the flows that go into it, and payment from Mexico into that. But that doesn't, once we get out of it, that doesn't concern us. In connection also with this act, I B W C has been allocated and funded a certain amount to install the debris and also the debris screen and also to do whatever is necessary with the continued maintenance and operation of the I O I. That's it in general. The effective date of that is October this year, and hopefully before then, we will have our agreement with I B W C ready to go.
Go ahead, Councilor Mendoza.
I'm just curious, when you were saying that they're taking responsibility, and we were just finishing our slip line on improving the I O I, was there any cost left or to the city on that improvement? And will they be responsible for some of that cost?
For the I O I? I mean, for the slip lining that's going on?
For the I O I.
Yeah, we're not paying anything on that now. But see, that has been a continuing controversy between I B W C and the city of Nogales regarding ownership of that line and responsibility. In the past, when there's been breaches of the line, when it's overflowed, it's broken, drug bundles plug it up, all those problems, it was always pointing fingers at each other. It's your line, you fix it, you're responsible for it. It's always been our position, city of Nogales, that that is a federal issue and a federal responsibility. Now, this legislation makes it mandatory that it's a federal line.
So they'll take over?
They'll take it over. It's gonna be their line, it's their baby.
Councilor Montiel.
Mr. Machado, we're still gonna pay our use of the I O I as far as our laterals, right? Our connections, our usage? Or are we gonna?
We don't pay anything. Part of the agreement that we are negotiating, there'll be no cost for the use of the I O I, because we're conveying any interest that we have. You know, we're saying, you know what, it was yours anyway, but we're gonna settle this. Whatever interest you think we have, it's yours now, okay? And that's what the agreement that's called for under this agreement. But in addition to that, we can continue to use the I O I, because we own, bought and paid for, a right to convey within that line 4.84 million gallons daily. We're at two, we're not even at half, okay? So this agreement will ensure that we continue to be able to use that without cost.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilor Montiel.
So, yeah, did you, did you wanna ask that? Oh, you, oh, okay, okay, that's fine, yeah. Oh, he did, okay. So, so nothing's, there's nothing to do in terms of the city being involved now with this I O I?
Well, we still have to reach an agreement, and there's some points of controversy within that agreement that still have not been resolved. I would say ninety-five percent.
What's one, for example, just curious, I'm not an expert in it.
Not sure. One of the biggest sticking points is the I B W C, or at least some of the attorneys representing I B W C, were insistent that we could not enforce the agreement. In other words, they wanted to, they called it a non-enforceable agreement, and it was our position that this thing doesn't exist. It's either an agreement, or it's not an agreement, and if we have an agreement and you don't keep up your agreement, there's gotta be a way for me to enforce that agreement. Well, they didn't like that provision, yeah? So, we've been in negotiations with them, mayor has been really active in that with his counterpart, and hopefully we'll resolve that.
Soon.
We have to resolve it before they get their funding.
Yeah, okay. So before they get the funding, the city has to agree?
Agree.
To some of those?
We have to have, exactly.
Okay. Does that take a long time, is that like?
Well, again, if we can resolve those, if we could resolve those issues, then we could do it tomorrow, right?
For the community.
But the deadline is October 2024.
October 1st.
If it's not done by then, then this legislation is gone.
That's good.
Along with their funding, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Mendoza.
I'm curious, is this also gonna affect the relationship that the county used to have with the city? Because the laterals that are connected outside the city limit, we would provide like the pre-treatment connections and stuff like that, inspections, I guess, but now, is the county gonna be directly involved with I B W C as far as laterals that are connected outside the city limits?
No, the county has nothing to do with this agreement, nor with I B W C. The sewer systems outside the city limits still are part of the city system.
Even the ones that are out there by Rio Rico?
Well, it depends how far out. Our service area is up to Ruby Road, am I correct, in Resal Alejandro? Yes, up to Ruby Road. So anything over this way, the connections to the I O I are pursuant to agreement with the city.
So is that gonna be discussed also?
That's not an issue, we know that, that's our responsibility, that is counted toward our flow limitation, we have responsibility to make sure that certain contaminants aren't going in, so on. That's part of our responsibility, it is right now.
But does that affect our flow amount, that we're, like, we're using 2 million something right now?
It's included in that total. Right now, it's within, it's part of the 2 million round figures.
So in the future, as we annex, that'll increase, if we annex?
No, it won't increase, because we're annex, if we were to annex that area, we're already, it's already included.
And is there anything from the east side that runs into that?
No, it's all septic.
No, that's, we don't have a sewer system separate out there.
Everything's septic and stuff, okay. Well, thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Joe, I know that Mr. Doyle kinda touched into this question, but I don't know if he was just talking about the maintenance issues with the I O I, but is there, does the city have any pending or outstanding balances due to I B W C or any other organization?
No.
Regarding the I O I?
No, we don't. There was, we had a separate controversy regarding the treatment of the sewage. The I O I is just as the conveyance to the plant. There was a separate and is a separate agreement with I B W C regarding the treatment of that, who's responsible for it, and so we have the right to 4.84 in the plant, also treatment of the plant, but that's a separate agreement, and there are no outstanding amounts allegedly due on either side at this point.
Those agreements that we're waiting for, your recommendation is that we go ahead and agree with I B W C taking over the?
Well, we don't have to agree or approve, the legislation is passed, okay? But we have to reach an agreement with I B W C regarding our ability or what the process is to be able to continue to use the I O I. And it's just a matter of putting in writing what we do right now, anyway. If somebody wants a connection, they would go to the city, they would do whatever the process is, and we connect it. I B W C can't tell us no at this point, right? But again, that's part of the controversy. But it would just be really putting into writing what we're doing now, and to guarantee in the future that we will continue to have that right to make more connections, because after this legislation takes effect, it's very clear that it's not our line anymore.
Mr. Machado, one last question. So if there was to be a disaster before we do this agreement, is the city still gonna be liable for that?
Like it's done in the past? No, that's the controversy. There has been disasters in the past where there's big breaches, and the city's position has always been, it's your responsibility, I O I, because 95% of that stuff's coming from Mexico. And I B W C has always denied it, and it's been a standoff, but we've been very successful in those standoffs so far.
Anybody else?
But this legislation and the agreement will eliminate all of that. After this, it's theirs, and whatever happens, it's their problem.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. So basically, we're trying to get to the point where it's theirs, but not lose our rights, not lose our rights, not lose our 4.84 capacity, and, you know, and so where the city still has a say where, who connects, when, and where, and everything. You know, we're trying to keep all our city rights as we've had them up to now, correct?
Yes.
Right? Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll move to next item. Item three, update on paving and water projects, Royal Road, Rancho Grande, Dakasana, Western Industrial Park. Mr. Barsha.
Mayor, Council, I'm gonna give you an update on where we are with the projects from WIFA, the water projects, and Juan Guerra is gonna give you an update on the paving side of those projects. As you may know, Royal Road and Rancho Grande, the water projects are complete. Every single person in those subdivisions is connected to the new line. So we completed that portion, we complied with all the requirements, with testing and everything, and I'm really glad that now it's done, and hope that nobody would have big outages in the water system for a long, long time. So that's for Rancho Grande and Royal Road. So the paving would have to be coming after some work that needs to be done there, and Juan is gonna go and detail on how we're progressing with that. There are projects that we're working on is Western Avenue, which probably everybody saw, because it's really visible in the middle of the street. That project is moving along. We agree with the contractor to not open the street more than a section during the work, so they can allow the traffic to go by, and every day, they need to cover that, and they are doing that, and they put in recompacting and putting some millings there, so there's no dust when they close. So they're moving along that. So, in the, they, so far, they have about 500 feet of piping ground right now. They started moving on the crossings of the wash that's there, the Western Avenue wash, they installed one pipe in one of the crossings, close to the clinic that's there, and they are gonna be moving to the next one really soon. So I'm really happy that the progress that they're making, because if they continue that pace, we're gonna have that done in less than the time that we allocated in the contract. Their project that we are working on, and is about 35% complete in the water system, is La Castellana. That was a really big challenge for the contractor and for us, because the only supply for the whole area going up in the hill in Soto subdivision, all the subdivision there, is only one source of supply for that area and goes through La Castellana. So we had to do bypasses, we had to do everything that we could to mitigate the outages there. So the contractor is almost 85% complete, the main pipe is in the ground. Now, what they are doing is running the service lines to the edge of the property, and once the new line is tested and disinfected and approved, they're gonna start doing the connections to the house. So we're hoping that that could be done in the next month or so, that have all the connections done. The challenge there is that we have to maintain the two, the old line and the new line alive, so we have to have the water in both lines, so, because people cannot be without water for, during the reconnections. So, but we did that bypass, and they're gonna be able to maintain the flows in both lines, and then once the services are connected, they're gonna disconnect the old line and abandon that. They had to abandon that by putting some concrete slurry inside of the old pipe, so that pipe is abandoned in the ground. As soon as the project is completed, we're ready to do paving for that street. That, we reached an agreement and with approval of the city manager, that to do that in-house, we remove the portion of the money that was allocated in that contract for paving, and paving just the trench, and say the rest of the paving is really in bad condition. Why don't we do that in-house and use the money that we have in that contract to buy the materials? We have the staff and the equipment to do that, and with approval of the city manager, we decided that that was the best way. So as soon as the contractor finished with the water line, the city crews would go and start that project, and Juan is gonna talk a little bit more about what the plan is on the paving and how it's gonna be done. And I guess, that's my presentation on the water WIFA projects that we have. So far, we have been able to maintain the budget, we have not exceeded the allocated budget, so that's, I'm really happy to say that. I don't know, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barsha. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Barsha, I know that Councilman Monillas asked the question before, are we doing any paving right now?
Yes, the contractor in Royal Road started doing some of the paving on some of the streets, I think we did have Royal Road, Duncan and David, and some of the laterals there. What they are doing is they are using little windows in the weather that allows them to pave, because they have to have certain conditions in the ground, so the paving is done correctly. And Juan probably is gonna explain to you more on the paving portion of that, but we have done Royal Road, Duncan, David, Tubrolode, and the three little cul-de-sacs there, there, and that's what we have been able to do so far.
So when you say you're paving on windows regarding the weather, if the weather continues to be cold, you have to halt the paving?
Yeah, Juan explained better than me, but the ground has to be 60 degrees to be able to do the paving. So if the temperature in the ground is not 60 degrees, we cannot do the paving. That's the standard, and the temperature has to be right to be able to do a good job on the paving.
I have, Mayor, have a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Monillas.
All these, Mr. Barsha, they're just water projects, right? So, because I know that we, you know, you were up here a few months ago and told there was a shortfall with the, what was it, 31 projects, it was 21 water and 10 sewer. So we, since we used up pretty much all the money, are we gonna get to do any sewer projects?
Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. We have a project that you approved to revamp in the lift station in Metal Hills. That project is moving along, we bid it out, we award the contract, we have been having some delays there in the supplies, the pumps and electrical materials, switches and things like that, they're in sometimes six weeks or 10 weeks to deliver, but they are moving along. Also, the review process for this, because they are so special, we hire a consultant to review that all the materials and everything that they're putting there are the right kind, and the things that they comply with the WIFA requirements that there had to be made in the U.S., all the steel and everything, there are special requirements for the supplies that we use. So that has been taking a little bit of time. The good thing about that project, probably you didn't see any impact on that, because it's isolated, and it's gonna be a little bit of construction to do a bypass of the lift station during the construction, but it's only a few, I think 200 or 300 feet of bypass that, so during the construction, the sewer could go bypassing the lift station there, put in pumps, and keep everything running, nobody would notice that the construction is going on. Any more questions?
Okay, any other question from Mr. Barsha? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, members of the Council. As Mr. Barsha did a good job explaining a little bit about the paving plan, as he said, the contractor is currently working on Royal Road. They have been doing a lot of work in the A/B compaction, and they are using a very good quality product there that is very well compacted so far. And one of the instructions given to the contractor was to, before, I don't know if you remember, the paving was with different widths and was not a constant width, so we requested to average the area to have a constant width to make it look better. We might see, or we might have few gaps between existing driveways and the current paving age, but we can go back with city streets and do that extra, the connection with existing driveways. In case of you receive any complaint from neighbors, we'll go back and do that work with city crews. And they have done a lot of progress with other roads, because as you know, we have been in very cold weather, they have been making progress anyway with their work. And according to the contractor, it's supposed next week, Thursday, we'll have a good time, about 70 degrees in the middle of the day. If that is the case, they have planned to pave a portion of David Drive, and if the weather permits, they will continue doing so when the weather permits. But again, at the same time, they will continue doing their work in other roads, they will not stop. Royal Road, excuse me, Rancho Grande, they have not started, they don't want to They don't want to have a mess there if they are not able to. They want to complete Royal Road first, which I think makes sense. Once we remove the paving, if in case of a rain or something, the roads on Rancho Grande are a little bit steeper and it's better to keep it in that way for now. On Castellana, as Mr. Barcena has mentioned, this project was not in a radar. The original plan was to just pave the trenching. But because the road is in totally bad shape, it's in a dilapidated condition, I think it's the best way to use that money that he had for the trenching and do it with city resources. Even though that we all have to set aside other projects that we have in our budget, but I think we are positive that we can make it. Our crews are very well trained and we can do it. And at the end, I think we'll be a better project. And then Santa Cruz Training Program asked me two or something else in front of the school or the training area because there is a lot of people crossing there. So maybe we can put pedestrian crosswalks and/or maybe those type of similar devices that we installed on Masti Way to have some more better safety and improve the safety of kids. But that's after the project is done. And Industrial Park Drive, as you know, finally, we started, the contractor started this week. They already removed all the millings, I mean, the asphalt. And then we received all the millings in our yard and we also received part of the existing ground to our yard. One of the ideas is that we can use that material for patching because we have a burner that we can use the millings to do patchings. Not big paving projects, but at least patching. We can recycle the material. The other thing that we can use with, where we can use the material is to continue expanding the paths that we have on the top of the hill on Hojocam and creating a bigger path for maybe more parking or more use in the future. So that's a plan that we have with that dirt moving from Industrial Park. Contractor has planned to next week or this week and next week start, continue working on the, there are a couple of spots that we need to replace part of the curbs that are broken. We also have few driveways to be replaced. Also, we, the project includes concrete header, no, concrete valley garters on the sides. So they will be busy doing that in the next, let's say, one to, one or two weeks. Again, according to the the weather next week, they are planning to pull concrete as weather permit. Next week, we have scheduled a meeting with Ada to be on the same page about the traffic control plan that affects Mariposa, just to minimize the impact of the construction here. I guess that's pretty much it. I don't know if you have any question.
Councilman Monillas.
Mr. Guerra, you know, it's more, you know, I'd like to commend you on these on these projects that are being done. However, I still have a little bit of concern. And I'll just go back real fast on the history of the RIFA projects. Before we started, I remember distinctly on one of the council meetings, I asked you and Mr. Barcena before we started the RIFA projects. And this was when we were planning on doing the thirty-one or thirty-two projects. I asked you guys, do we have enough money to do the pavement? And your answer was yes. Then you came back and said, there's a shortfall, we can't do other projects. And said, fine, then do the ones that we can afford with the money we have, with the loan we have. You come back, then you ask me, then you ask Mayor and Council for more funding because you didn't have for finishing off the payment on these on these projects. So on these projects, were you, although I asked Mr. Bermudas already that we're covered, you're not gonna come back and tell us, hey, we need additional funding to finish off the payment on these five projects?
I don't know, I don't want to tell you no because we are still in the middle of the construction phase. And as you know, there are always things that are unknown. I cannot, I don't want to tell you no because in case of I have to, I will be here. Sorry. Sometimes there are unknown issues. I don't know if I.
I understand, Mr. Guerra. But you were sitting earlier in the in the meeting and we wanted to allocate some ARPA money for the downtown project. And so, you know, we can't, we can't move doing that. And if you can't guarantee, and I know that there's issues that will come up and I understand that. Like one of the questions I have, Mr. Barcena is explaining right now, that on the Western Avenue, they're covering up, they're compacting and adding millings to it. So are they, is that an additional cost to the city?
For what?
For the compacting and then they're throwing the millings on again for the, no?
No, that's part of the project. That's that's part of the project. What they're doing there is just to keep the road, drive the road.
Yeah.
Prevent any accidents or anything there. So they are gonna come back and pave that trench that they are building right now. It's part of the project and that is the foundation of costs to the contractors.
What issues do you think you might may encounter, Mr. Guerra, on these on these projects?
Well.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, sometimes, for example, well, when there is a water and sewer project that we don't know for sure what is underneath, sometimes we find obstructions like maybe aging pipes that were abandoned a long time ago that needs to be removed, that we didn't know that existed. Or sometimes there was Portland cement concrete underneath that we didn't know that existed and needs to be removed and we have to pay the contractor. Those are things that are unknown things. But at this point, because the Royal Road and Rancho Grande is open land, there are no, I think we are not expecting so far more money for those projects. Now, going back to the the final project that we will have with these projects, I really believe that it is a cheap way to do projects like just paving the trenching. But all depends in the type of paving or with the construction equipment, the heavy equipment driving on top of Castellana, for example, the road was not that bad, but because it hit alligator cracking, it was totally destroyed. So it doesn't make sense to spend a hundred thousand in just trenching when the road is totally destroyed. So I guess the best way is to get the money and do a right work. I think it's a good option. And sorry, I know that maybe it was not the original plan, but we have to be prepared to have a Plan B.
You went from Plan B to Plan C and, you know, I just, you know, I understand there's some issues that could come up. But, you know, we need, we need just to make sure because, like we discussed earlier, you know, we wanna spend ARPA funds with the downtown project. And and I don't feel comfortable moving forward with that and then you guys coming back, well, I need an additional hundred thousand or an additional two hundred thousand because these issues are not cheap. They're not like, they're not like a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars.
And in the case of Royal Road and Rancho Grande, we can easily opt to, you know, opted for not doing anything and just paving the trenching. But honestly, at the end, it's not a good quality product because people will, for many, many years, people from that neighborhood, those neighborhoods have been asking for no paving. I think the brown paving will stay there for many, many years to come. And I have heard very good comments from residents there. Everybody is happy there. So any more questions?
Thank you. Mr. Casamor Montiel.
And on that note, I do walk around there, like I'm sure everyone does. And we have people that we know. And so, thanks. Yeah, it's going well. You know, people are relatively excited to see the trucks moving and doing their job. And they see, I mean, they see that the job is being done, the paving is being done. I know Royal Road talked to Roy about, you know, the residents calling and saying that it's, you know, they're really excited about it. So, you know, thank you both for keeping on top of it.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerra, and, you know, great job. Now we move to item number four, update downtown redevelopment project. Mr. Tapia.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. As you know, we have, a few months ago, we presented the idea of the downtown redevelopment. And now, based on the discussion we have with our downtown redevelopment committee, now I'm gonna give you an update, what's going on. First, I wanna show you some examples of the art designs that we discussed during our committee meetings, some options and also the locations, potential locations to set the ark. And also the wording, potential recommendation from the committee about the wording to include it on the on the ark. Also, give you an update of the lighting, of the installation that we have, the lighting project for downtown. We did only an area between the beginning of Morley Avenue to the south, all the way to East Street. But when I continue, so I'll give you an update. And also, one of the ideas was also to work on the on the bathroom, the existing bathroom that is there. I'm gonna give you some kind of an update, what's going on there. And in your package, also you have the downtown committee minutes. On that minutes and your attachment on the case, you can actually read the minutes and the recommendations, discussions that we had during those meetings. And again, source of funding, yeah, very good discussion we had today about the funding. So we need to get some funding before it's gone. Thank you. So again, Mayor and Council, we have some examples that we found in different places, ideas about the arts, different styles. Some are metal, the footings, some are concrete and brick. So those, I'm gonna show you one by one, but basically those are the ideas that we were listing. As you know, some of you may know Yuma, downtown Yuma. They have in the downtown, an entrance arc and also on the exit. This is the north side of the downtown Yuma. In Kingman, they have a nice arc also. It's a little wider because that's the highway. In Ridley, in California, they have that one too. A little wider as well, they have metal and they have brick, concrete footings, a base. It's another town here, a little bigger in scale. They have parking structures there, but again, metal and some brick and concrete bases, the footings. Lincoln Square is a little smaller scale, probably on the scale of Morley Avenue, but it's a little, not as wider as the other ones. This is in Orlando. This is a little smaller scale as well. It's only for the small district, the shopping or restaurants area. And this one is also a little bigger scale, but at the same time, they have integrated some ideas from the surroundings. They have a brick, they have a metal and also they have a tree representing the area, the neighborhood. And some people mentioned also Nogales, you know, the Nogales, the tree, the historic element in the downtown. This is a proposal in Somerton, they're gonna do it this year, they're working on it. So the intent of these examples, just to show you what the discussion we have in committee, we didn't have specific options selected, but we wanted to show you so you can actually view what we're discussing. Of course, you like one of these, just let us know because we need to move forward. Also, the locations during the discussion that we have to locate an arc on Morley Avenue, on Court Street, on the north side and also on Morley Avenue, on Park Street. The Park Street location provides a little challenging, but it will be an ideal location because a lot of people walking from the border, on the west side of the tracks into Park Street, then into Morley Avenue. So that will be an ideal entry point for that purpose. On the north side, on the Court Street, we have a lot of elements in the neighborhoods on the north side, but also the shopping center, the mall, on the west side of the tracks. So we have a lot of elements that we can integrate the entrance on the north side. So those are the two locations that we discussed. Of course, there were other ideas in different places to start placing the arc on the west side. But I mean, the main discussion that we, what we mentioned during these meetings is Morley Avenue. That was the focus. And also the committee, they have recommended, this is one of the recommendations, to put on the arc, one of the arcs selected, welcome to historic downtown Nogales. That was a recommendation. I want to show you this because I don't know, we're not asking for recommendations right now, but I mean, you can give us also direction to be able to proceed, especially on this, the arc and the lettering, so we can get costs, the estimations. Every letter that you see there, it will be a cost established for every single letter, metal letters on the arc. So we need to actually know, city council, mayor and council likes, if you like it, so I can start getting the price of these letters. And also, I would like to proceed with getting estimation for the arc. We're gonna do internally our design and bring back to you two or three options. But we're gonna do the work internally, not hiring anyone from outside. And I wanna show you a little more on that, on the city stuff. About the update for the lighting, we did a portion of Morley Avenue, as you remember during the Christmas parade. We put those before the parade, before December second. And up to this day, we have spent nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, ninety-two cents to get the lights. And we still have four boxes left that we can use on the other section that we're still pending. As you may know, Unisource, Roberto Guevara from Unisource is part of the committee. And they agreed to donate four poles to be installed on the west side of the parking lot of the Nogales Community Development. So these are the locations that Unisource staff decide to donate. Right now, we have, we have this line, the streetlights on the east side of Morley Avenue. So on the discussion, then Roberto mentioned, well, maybe we can help you and put in poles on the west side so you can continue the same zigzag lighting on Morley Avenue. In this case, because they told me that they cannot put those poles on the sidewalks because of security issues, you know, from the Unisource perspective. So we discussed the idea with Nogales Community Development and they agree. We had to provide a letter after rising them. But they agreed to, Unisource, to install those poles. And last, this afternoon, Roberto Guevara sent me an email saying that everything is ready to go. So probably next week, they're gonna be installing those poles so we can continue putting the lighting all the way to Court Street. So that will be one, something that we can do in the next couple of weeks. So that's coming up. And these are examples of the letters that Unisource and Nogales Community Development agree with the city, so we can continue working on those lights. And now, about the bathrooms. As you know, the downtown bathrooms, they're good. I mean, they're working, but that dated. And a lot of people were complaining about that we need to fix them up. So now we have a young architect in our city staff, so he's going to help me to remodel the bathrooms. Instead of hiring someone from outside, consultant to help us with this, we're going to design the new model, a little more modern. And then based on that, we're going to get the estimations for the remodel, and then based on the funding that we get, we're going to complete this project. As you can see on the right side, there's a sewer line connection there. So we need to work and be sure that it's working. One of the maintenance person mentioned to me that they are having issues with the sewer line. So we need to work on that as part of the remodel. And in our research, we're looking into different accessories and how we can create a more modern facility for the public, and also, you know, to be able to maintain it, more durable equipment. So that's the intent of the remodel. And the architect is doing some examples right now. He did a new site plan, and he's doing some 3D renderings. Like a women's bathroom to remodel, something like that. And based on the, based on the equipment that we get, the new partitions, flooring, the walls, the sinks, things like that. So we're working on that, the men's bathroom and women's bathroom as well. And as you can see on this, on this floor plan, the existing bathrooms, they have a lot of empty space on the south side of the building, on the male bathrooms and also in the women's bathrooms. So the architect, our city staff is working on utilizing better space, spacing the equipment, the accessories on the, more efficient locating the facility. So that's the intent of the, but once he completes the drawings and establishes every equipment that we're going to install there, we're going to cost estimations so we can get the funding. For the potential funding, this is the same slide. I showed it to you the first time, but then again, we don't have funding yet for this project. And I know you were discussing the idea of using some of the ARPA funds before it's spent. So it would be nice, Mr. Ojotes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I have a question regarding those ARPA funds. When we started talking about this project, we were under the impression that we had $500,000 to invest in this project. Later now, I find out that there's only $297,000. So what happened to the other $203,000? Where did those go?
It, Mr. Vice Mayor, it was inclusive of the funding that we gave to finish Road Road and Entre Grande. When we were talking about the $500,000, it was a ballpark figure. I didn't have the actual numbers in front of me. So we thought, I thought it was about half a million dollars. That's what I was assuming. Obviously, when we got the figures, it came out to $297,000.
So if we, if we allocate those $297,000 as soon as possible, so, you know, just in case Mr. Guerra or something wants to pave another street or something.
Well, I mean, it's just like anything else. We don't want to use contingency, but that's what it's for in case of emergencies, like Mr. or Councilman Bonilla said. You know, unknowns, that's what the contingency is for. Obviously, we don't want to use it. But I think this is very important this morning, as you were there along with myself on the Government Affairs meeting, there was a lot of excitement in the air. And what they're looking at is, you know, having, using Karen's Park, using a kiosk for bands, having food trucks, when we told them that we were one step ahead of them. And this is in the mix already, so it's going on. One of the things that my direction to Mr. Tapia is to go ahead and get a quote, how much it's going to cost for the arch, how much it's going to cost for the revamping of the bathrooms. As far as to Karen's Park, there's a lot of ideas, however, we need to tread lightly with that because we need to, Mr. Tapia said he was looking at a conceptual plan. We can partner up with NCD for the Main Street Program Grants, talking to Board of Supervisors today and County Manager. They want to collaborate and invest into downtown Nogales as well. So that's refreshing and that's exciting today. You know, I had a meeting with them after the Government Affairs meeting. So I think, I think it's a win-win for the county. It's a win-win for us. It's a win-win, most importantly, for our community.
So my question again is, once we allocate, or earmarked whatever, what do you want to use, this $297,000, they can't be touched or moved to any other project, right?
It's up to you. You can always reassign that money. But once you earmark it, it's earmarked. If you want to use it later on to do something else, if we're not using it, then it's totally up to you. But I think this is a very well-spent investment. If you look at, I mean, if you, anybody's driving south from Court Street into Morley Avenue, you can see the lights and the difference that is made so far, all the way up to East Street. Now, just imagine the lights all the way up to, string lights all the way up to Court Street, along with that arch lit up. I mean, light attracts, and that's what we're trying to do to the downtown area here.
So, okay, so I'll be talking about that on the future agenda item. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Tapia.
And as I mentioned earlier, now that we have an architect in our team, we can do some things internally, especially design of this remodel, the arc, and then go from that. The reason I put this bathroom from Tokyo there on the screen, I was reading an article from the New York Times, there is a shortage of public bathrooms in the U.S., not only in the U.S., but also in the world. So this project that we're doing in downtown Nogales actually is going to be unique because a lot of cities are abandoning their public bathrooms. It's kind of strange, but I mean, they are not disappearing from the public on the downtowns. But it's going to be a very good idea to remodel the bathroom. But yes, just to close, we have, our team can do more things now than before. With my experience, an architect and a building inspector, his experience in plan review and inspections, I think we can have things done internally as well. Thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Guerra, Councilor.
Just for my information, but the bathrooms under the kiosk, are they beyond repair? Are they out of the question? You're done?
Under the kiosk.
So they can be reconverted to additional bathroom?
Yeah, we're talking only on the top, the top bathroom, the one that we have right now.
Any else? Councilor Montell.
Mr. Tapia, thank you for your efforts. I know that you're collaborating with the members also, the committee members. And I sat in one of your meetings, and I liked the way you and Mr. Bermudes and Mr. Bohorkes here were interacting and getting feedback from the people that really live there. And I know David's out there. And I know he spends a lot of time downtown. And the reason I want to also agree with Mr. Bohorkes, and I've been talking a little bit about the COVID funds. As you know, I asked the Finance Director, where are the leftover COVID funds? And I think it's important that the downtown merchants and all these people that spend a lot of time there, you know, the art people. I know, David, you're not going to like it. You guys, the art people, right? But you've done so much down there. You know, they started with very little, and now they've expanded, and they've involved the community and so forth, which is very admirable, because no one else was doing it. So we have this amount left, and Mr. Bohorkes just spilled the beans. He's going to put it on a future agenda item so we can allocate those funds to the projects you just mentioned earlier. And but also, it would be nice, and I'll talk to Mr. Bermudes later on. I don't want to get out of topic. My friend here will tell me. But I'm sure we could use funds too, now that we're going to be talking about budget, you know, we're going to have our budget meetings and so forth. Hopefully, Mr. Bermudes, we could use some funds, because the people downtown and like Nogales residents, like you say, you're going to collaborate, we talked today about collaborating with other entities, but you know, everyone shares this space, if you will, and it's a collaborative space. So it's really important that we use also other monies to fix the bathrooms and not just count on the COVID leftover funds. But we start and we finish the project. And I think that's what the people from Nogales want to see, because you know, reputation is always like you start something and you don't finish. How many meetings have been, like so many committees, you saw some of the committee members mention, oh, we've been in some of these committees, and there's never follow-through here. And it's true, because we can go back and note that. So it's really important that you, as a city manager, use these funds, get other funds, and get these projects going. I think the people will be very happy.
Councilor Montell, actually, the mayor and I had a meeting with Ricardo Muñoz and Melissa Gallego from Cerro Estres, and they're in the process of building or opening up a youth center downtown. So I don't want to get ahead of myself or give you false expectations, but the meeting that I had today with the county manager was really good. They're really excited to collaborate and put some money towards the cause.
What I've heard also, Mr. Bermudes, is that, you know, there's finally dialogue between the city and the county, which is, you know, in fairness to, you know, Mayor Maldonado and yourself, you're starting to talk, and you're starting to, you know, see how we could work together to make all these things happen. And I think the people out there are going to start seeing that. So thanks.
I just want to touch on what the city manager, Mr. Ruiz, said about the meeting this morning. There was a lot of excitement, and one of the supervisors, Manny Ruiz, brought the subject to the table. And I'm glad he did, because we kind of hung on to that and elaborated more on what we're doing. And there's a lot of interest and ideas. And what I was telling Mr. Bermudes is, well, you know, maybe we can get some of those peoples on the committee so we can find more funding to help the city make this thing come true. So we'll be, like Mr. Bermudes says, he talked to the city, to the county manager, and I don't know if you talked to Mr. Ruiz about it, but there was other people that want to get involved in it. I know that Chris from the old courthouse was also very interested, because the courthouse is right there on that section. Yeah, and he's very interested in helping us to do so.
That's good. That'd be great.
Vice Mayor, today's meeting also, there was, Supervisor Ruiz was also present. And right now, what they're talking about is creating another committee to assist the committee that we have right now. And then, once there's substance behind that, then they want to have a joint meeting between supervisors and council to expand on the idea so everybody can agree and be on the same page.
One question, Mr. Tapia. On the gateway arches, are you talking about doing two or selecting one or the other?
On the arcs, yeah, we, when I make some sketches, a couple of options from the seven or eight that I presented, and then show it to the committee and then bring it back to you. The idea is to move forward with as soon as possible, not delay the selection, because we need to, internally, we need to design it. But the idea is to select more metal, the footings, to establish the history behind Morley Avenue. Some of those cities, they have special elements from the surroundings, historic values, the building, the brick, the facades, the streets. So that portion of the history is integrated in the arc, can be in the footings or also in the metal.
Okay. Just FYI, on the Mortian Park, you're looking at west part of the railroad, right?
Yeah, on the east side of the rail.
On the east side of rail?
Like I mentioned, it's a challenge, because on parking, you go down, but by the corner, not on the hill. You need to be careful over there, because of the, I can explain that, but it's a little canal underneath. And I need to be careful there, too.
Yeah.
Just to follow up on that, the west side is, we're taking into consideration that the Ticoncini Port Avenue will be expanding, so it would be a problem for us if we put it there, and then we have to move it, and it's going to cost more money. And then, on the east side, we got the wash problem, you know, we can't find a good foundation base so we can hang that arch. So that's why we're looking at other options at other, you know, like on Court Street and Morley. I don't know if the wash has a, will that cause any problems on that side?
Not in Morley and Court Street. That's on the west side.
Just on the, okay.
The parking lot.
On the north side. I mean, on the south side.
Yeah, that's the reason I was mentioning, you know, if it was going to be on the west side, you know, we got to look at what the future improvements of the Ticoncini border crossing is going to be.
That's a challenge right there, Mayor, yes.
One of the things, I mean, obviously, we had talked about two arches, but the main arch that we're talking about that it's on a corner of Morley and Court Street. And as soon as, as soon as those funds are allocated, Mr. Tapia, it's already working on getting a quote. The last thing I want, I can give you my promise right now that we're not going to have paralysis by analysis, because that's happened, that's happened in the past. And then we need to, we need to put stuff in there. We need to get to work, and we need to show our community that it's not just lip service.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Tapia. One more, hold on, one more comment.
Tapia, I want you to get a hold on Mr. Yeah, Mr. Guevara, and thank him for the donation of those light poles, because Unisource donated the four light poles, and they're doing the labor to, they're installing them for the city.
Yeah, the city staff is installing the lights, but they're donating the poles, installing them. Really nice, really fast. Roberto moved really quickly.
Well, just by donating those poles, you know, it's a big savings for the city.
Yeah. Yeah, during the month of December, we were going back and forth, the legal requirements, but it was done.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Guevara.
No, I was just thinking, if you guys go with that, the court and Morley, I hope you get a nice arc where it can be decorated in Christmas, you know, make it look real nice as we go through the downtown area.
Yeah.
Thank you. And high enough for the floats. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tapia. Okay, we move on to number nine, liquor license. A consideration and possible action of liquor license 2024-1, approval and recommendation of an insurance of liquor license for Ms. Andrea Balman, Licowitch, for Papa Locas, 2951 North Grand Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, 85621, number 012 Restaurant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the post, motion passes. Going to orders number 11, orders. A consideration and possible action of orders 2023-11-060, an order of the City Council of Nogales approving settlement in Santa Cruz County Superior Court, case number S1200CV202300080, Luna versus City of Nogales. On this, I want to... On this, I want to, I want, go ahead, Ms. Montiel. Go ahead, Ms. Montiel, ladies.
I won't now. Um, yeah, it's a couple of things. And I just want to say that I have asked the city manager to ensure that the policies that have been set forth are being followed, that the employees, all employees feel that they have rights. I want him to, and Mr. Machado to get together and do a little bit of training. And I know that there has been training in the past, but obviously we, we need more training. I want to express also that I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not. Well, um, yeah, I, I just want to say to, to, to Mr. Bermúdez that this is very difficult. That's why I'm struggling a little bit, that he, I am asking him as city manager to take care, that this does not happen again. It can't happen again, that you make sure that every employee, not just a few, or not just those that have, you know, employees out there that are, that don't have a voice for a long time, that, that they, they're protected. And you're the city manager, you, you are going to make sure that the process that is in place is followed, that they're protected also, if they do follow the processes that are in place. And so I will make sure, Mr. Bermúdez, that, that you, you follow up on this and you do what needs to happen to correct what has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Thank you. And I follow with what you've said and hopefully we will correct and, and work on this, Mr. Bermúdez. Thank you. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah.
We did?
Yes, sir. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. A consideration B, in consideration and possible action of order 2024 dash zero one dash zero zero one, an order of the city council of city, of city of Nogales approving lease and second amendment to option and lease agreement with Chief's Towers LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
Sorry, did you whisper that, please? For your attention.
We're not, we're not ready, Mr. Mayor, we're not ready to enter. We rethought about this and, and we need to negotiate, renegotiate. It's late already, sorry. So we need to look at this and talk to this company again and, and so anyways, we're asking that it gets tabled to further, or pulled actually from the agenda.
Should I table, pull it?
Pull it, yes, yes.
So council, I'm going to, I move to pull item B out of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes to pull item B from the agenda. Item C, consideration and possible action of order 2024 dash zero one dash zero zero two, an order of the council of city of Nogales, Arizona, approving Mariposa North Industrial Park four at two block, one and two, fourteen point six two acre subdivision plat. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. D, consideration and possible action of order 2024 dash zero one dash zero zero three, an order of the mayor and city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, extending temporary appointment of chief of police. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Montiel, councilwoman.
May I ask, text, I just know him by text. Carlos Jiménez, can you come up? Is that okay, Mr. Bermúdez, if texts comes up?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I want to make sure I follow protocol. Okay, I'll start calling you chief now, well, and we stop to approve it, right? So.
You hold it tight. I can't finish listening.
Yeah. So, Ms., yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things and I just want to let you know that you have a big responsibility and it's not new. You've been here for how long?
Thirty-seven years and one month.
Thirty-seven years and, and one, yeah, and one month?
Sorry, thirty-seven years and one month.
And one month? Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a long time. Thank you for your service. And I know that you have an enormous responsibility to really care for the people's safety. I also want to mention, just for transparency purposes, that you will work on, on, on getting your certi, your degree.
Correct.
Okay. Transparency is really important and I want to make sure that, that that is mentioned. And so again, congratulations. And I want you to know that, you know, you have, you're working, you have big shoes to fill, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for your service.
Thank you for your support, ma'am.
Anybody else? Mr. Jiménez, thank you again, you know, like councilwoman Montiel said, you know, big responsibilities, big shoes to fill, but you could count, I think you could count on everybody to support you.
Once again, mayor, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Well said. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Jiménez. Number twelve, ordinances.
Before we start on that?
Yes, sir.
On, on the ordinance that refers to exhibit A, it was not attached to the ordinance, but it's included in your package on page one oh seven, the packet page. That is the exhibit that goes with, and it is, it is the legal description of the two point nine seven parcel.
Which is what we read in the, in the public.
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 Yes, that was the public
Yes.
hearing in connection with this ordinance.
Yes.
And that is the, the, the correct exhibit A and it's part of the package, part of the package that was posted and so on. We will, we will substitute the, the original, on the original signed ordinance. So that way you can vote on it today.
Okay. With this said, item A, consideration and possible action of ordinance oh two zero two four dash zero one dash zero zero one, an ordinance of the city of Nogales amending ordinance number twenty X adopted June twenty-seven nineteen eighty-nine by amending the official zoning map by rezoning a portion of a nine point two acre partial of property in the city from single family residence twelve S F R twelve to light industrial L I two point nine seven acres on Santa Cruz County assessors partial number one oh three dash zero nine dash zero three eight. Any discussion? Okay. With this ordinance, we'll have an amended, or you can do the fixing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just referring to the exhibit A and, and we'll make the original, we'll attach the original, but I just want to make sure that the council knew what the, what the exhibit A went with the vote.
Agreed. Okay. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
In, in council, it was a unanimous vote, the council wishes to waive the second reading. It could do so at this point. It would, it would require a motion to waive the second reading.
So it's a motion to waive the second reading. Got a, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion is waived. Okay, thank you. Mayor and council's report on current events, Mr. Borria.
I got nothing to report, mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Doyle, councilwoman, councilwoman Lopez.
It's time we're getting towards the event, it's going to be on February the thirteenth. And on top of that, I'm going to start working for the fiestas, the Mayo event, even though it's early, but Cerro Estres has approached me and they want to make the event also together the same day. So we had to figure out, I mean, to us, it's no problem. We are really more than welcome to have that event on the same day, but we have many things going on. That's all.
Okay.
I have a question, mayor.
Yes, councilwoman Montiel. Vice mayor? Okay, no report. I report, Ms. Lopez, I just got a question. Ms. Lopez?
I'm sorry.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Cerro Estres was in our office this week and they're planning to do the festival for the Cinco de Mayo or the marathon on the fourth.
They want it on the fourth?
Yeah, that's, that's what they had said when they were here on Saturday, this week.
Yeah, to us, it's no
Because you guys, your festival will be on the fifth, on Sunday?
We'll make it the same day. That's what they wanted. I told them that if they wanted the same day that we have the fiestas, the Mayo, it'll be fine unless they're willing to have it the, the following day. Doesn't matter.
I know it's a Saturday, that's what
It's a Saturday. We want the event the Saturday.
Okay, okay.
So it's got to be the same day, huh?
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure.
So, future agenda items, so excuse me, councilwoman's report, you have something, Mr. Vice mayor?
Future agenda?
No, councilman report.
No, no, I don't have it.
Well, councilman reports, mayor's report, we've been very busy trying, trying to get, you know, Nogales on the map. I'm actually going to Washington on Tuesday. Mayor's in Washington conference, railroad is on my mind, funding is on my mind, migrant issue is on my mind, you know, so basically from A to Z. I think I missed this, this event last year because of the, no notice of, you know, since I walked in on the third. I want to thank everybody for your support that I've had all year. You know, I think we, we've worked together good and I think we should continue to work better. Look, look at the future and, and forget about the past. You know, I think we've got, you know, the, the county in good, in good terms, working together. And I think it's something that we got to push, push harder. I think I've got very well receptive of people talking of how our, our communication is with the county and, you know, and let's move forward. I think, you know, everybody, council, covenry, party authorities, chamber, U S council, Mexican council, consulate, and even the, you know, all the events that we had to close the year and, and everything, all that was great. I think, you know, all that helps. I, I think Nogales Sonora wants to do more events with us. We're looking at, starting on, on February second. Those of you interested in playing softball, we're going to start playing with, against the Consulao on, on February second, probably around seven P M. We're going to work around it, you know, the people that use the, the fields, it's going to be entertaining, it's going to be fun. But those are things that, that brings the community together. You know, I've talked to, to our city manager on continuing to have events downtown, you know, the, the, the food trucks were, was a great acceptance by, by everybody, the people there. I think, you know, it, it takes, you know, gives the, the people that go, went and saw the casitas and all that, an opportunity to have something to eat. So let's, let's keep on pushing on, on bigger and better things. And so I do appreciate for everything. On future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice mayor?
Mr. Mayor, do you, do you want to give the council an update on the migrant issue situation since it's going to start tomorrow or do you want to?
Micro, the migrants issue as of tomorrow, they start loading at the Border Patrol. No more, no more drop off area in, in the, in city. The only, the only ones that are going to be seen are basically the ones that are going to be handled by CBP one because they go to Casa Alitas, which is the old Bank of American Building. There'll be buses picking up at the migrants as of tomorrow at the Border Patrol station in the morning. One bus comes to Casa Alitas at noon and then they continue at Border Patrol in the afternoon and then another bus comes to Casa Alitas at eight thirty in the evening. So, you know, that migrant thing, hopefully it's something of the past. I've seen the, the records, we've dropped, we've dropped significantly amount of migrants that have been released, but, and hopefully, you know, because of the weather and everything, that all this stays, they continue to just load them up at the station. So that starts tomorrow.
Okay.
All right? And, you know.
Very good.
So it's very good news that we got two days ago. And go ahead, Vice, future agenda items, go ahead.
I want, on the future agenda, the whatever remaining ARPA funds to be allocated or, like you say earmarked, whatever the word you want to use, for the downtown project, Morley project.
Thank you. Ms. Montiel?
I'll send mine over.
Thank you. Muchas gracias.
I want to have the acting chief start off with a bang, so I'd like to see your report, presentation, just like the fire chief did today.
No, none.
Councilman Doyle?
Possible mayor, but I, I think I'd like to speak after you come back from the trip to the mayor's conference. You know, you're a chief lobbyist of the city. You're the man out there really, you know, making, making things happen, bringing funds to the city, opening doors. That's a very important role to get together with the rest of the mayors and I hope you, you're able to network. And one thing that I recollect sometimes, I don't know now if, if anything has been put in place in the last eight years to actually reimburse you from anything that you spend, getting together with some of those important leaders throughout the nation and also that you're going to be networking, trying to open doors, bring resources to our community. And sometimes we have to spend out of our pocket and I just hope that you get reimbursed for whatever expenditures there are or if they've already given you an expense for that, I'm not sure, but let us know how it goes. And, and then I'll, if, if, if we need to take action, I'll put something on the agenda for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Borria?
Possible discussion to start a
Possible discussion to start a softball league. We'll be having some people from, from the softball community, they want to, you know, talk about it, so if we can put that on the agenda also.
Okay, I think you, all that's in the works, and, and, you know, I know Little League's coming, and we'll have, we normally work around and, and make it work. Okay. As being, you know, let's, you know, I'd like to give the little bit of direction to the city manager on continuing to get these directors' reports, you know, I think it was a long night, but a well worth night with these reports that we're getting. The more, the more we're informed, the better, the better we're gonna be making the decisions. I think, you know, let's talk on working on, you know, performances and everything, evaluations, and plus, get ready for our next budget, you know. Right now, we, right now, we say falta mucho, and it's not in June, but it's right around the quarter. And, you know, and then, you know, I think there's, you know, Hector, you know this, you know, we talked about it other, in other instances, there's, you know, there's funding out there, there's funding, you know, we gotta continue to work on, on grants, USDA, other, other possibilities, and, you know, in any entity, if it's, if it's, you know, recreation, or if it's streets, if it's housing, all that, you know, we had a meeting today on, on looking for housing, you know. You guys know anybody that, that has any property interests or, or that, where the city could, could go out and, and and make new residential and stuff like that? There's, there's money out there for people, local citizens or from the community to develop, you know, with USDA and another, you know, Chicanos por causa, there's a lot of, a lot of resources out there. So I think if you guys hear of anything, let's work on it and, and see, you know, I'm trying to get USD to make a, make a presentation over here. I'm trying to make, try to get, you know, Pep to come down. You know, we're gonna have, Unidos also come down and give a presentation, so let's, you know, let's move forward, let's think positive, and hopefully, we could get our committee and residents' resources to come out, our businesses and everything. Okay, so with that said, move to adjourn this meeting.
That's all.
Thank you, all in favor? All right, all opposed? Thank you, good night, everybody.